At 7:12 PM, and request your roll call, please.
Counselor Linville.
Here.
Counselor West.
Here.
Counsel President Akrevall.
Here.
Counselor Lehan.
Here.
Mayor Nap.
Here. Thank you. Would the audience please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselors, I'd be open to a motion on order of agenda.
Your Honor, I move to approve the order of agenda.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, we approve order of agenda. It's previously published, there are copies on the counter at the side of the room, should anyone like to see one. All in favor, please say aye.
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 This is 5-0. Upcoming meetings, I always talk about upcoming, but I usually report on what's been going on also, which is quite a bit. There was a Clackamas County mayors, chairs, and city managers meeting, which I was not able to attend, but Mr. Cosgrove did, and those are sort of regularly scheduled. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee talked about the proposed jurisdictional transfers that may be part of the function of the vehicle registration fee that was passed, and they've created a grid of proposals for different communities in the county, and how those monies might be used. Areas that are at least up for discussion for Wilsonville might be Stafford Road and Advance Road, and it's not clear, the money is not all that large. They calculate about 1.1 million a year, and so that isn't going to go to do too many roads, it's not. But we should talk about it when it comes. There's other communities that will be up before Wilsonville is in that priority list, some of the rural communities that have had scant funding from other sources especially. 2020 legislative short session priority for the county and for the C4 Clackamas County Coordinating Committee group is advocating for the Interstate 205 improvements to create a third lane all the way around 205, including the Abernathy Bridge that would have to be rebuilt in order to do that. There is some indication that the unexpected delays on the Rose Quarter Freeway project up in Portland might create an opportunity for some of that dedicated funding to be advanced for the 205 project, which is ready to go, or very close to ready to go, when it seems like the Rose Quarter, which had dedicated funding from a couple of years ago, is not ready to go. So we shall see. We had a board meeting of the Greater Portland Inc. group, as well as a subsequent meeting with GPI people, and our GPI Chair of the Board and the executive officer came to talk with some of the mayors about the proposal that Greater Portland Inc. merged with the Portland Business Alliance, which is actually the chamber for Portland itself. There are pros and cons to that, but is under serious consideration. At the Clackamas County Business Alliance meeting this month, we had the various transit directors, including our very own Dwight Brashear, there presenting on the Clackamas County Transit Systems and how they function and what they're working on. It is amazing how much work is being done by all the different communities, that includes Canby Area Transit, South Clackamas Transportation District, which does the Malala area, the Sandy area metro transit, and TRIMET, along with Wilsonville Smart. So there's quite a bit of activity. I attended a town hall kind of meeting with Congressman Schrader, as did Counselor Linville also, and people from all over the county having a chance to talk in a roundtable format about issues that pertain to our federal representation, I guess I would say. We talked about, and Mr. Brashear was there also, and specifically was advocating for Wilsonville's continued consideration by the Federal Transit Administration with regard to our buses and rolling stock, and our continued work to move on to alternative fuels. The Clackamas County Coordinating Committee has a subcommittee on metro issues, and the representatives for the year were elected there, including Milwaukee City Councilor Kathy Heisey to be representative of the group to MPAC, Happy Valley Counselor Brett Sherman to be the alternate for MPAC representation. I was asked to continue for another year as the JPAC representative, which I indicated I would do, and Theresa Coloff of City Councilor in Lake Oswego is the alternate for JPAC. We also elected Happy Valley Counselor Brett Sherman as the co-chair of the entire subcommittee. So we got that out of the way for the year. Today, along with Counsel President Akrevall, I attended the Greater Portland Inc. Annual Economic Development Summit, which was a very well-attended, I don't know how many, there must have been 400 or 500 people there, I don't know, and had quite a bit of discussion from the panels there, talking especially about education and partnerships and regionalization of our efforts and the benefits of trying to do a regional perspective on a lot of the planning that we're doing. The City of Wilsonville and the City of Twallent joined together in sponsoring a table, and we had also then at our table Mayor Boobnik of Twallent, and City Manager Lombos was there also, along with representatives from a company in Twallent called Transpac, representatives from Wilsonville, employer Swire Coca-Cola were there, and we had expected one other one, but I suspect, though I haven't heard, that they got delayed in the traffic trying to get there. But it was a good discussion, I was pleased to be able to be there. Had some interesting discussions with a variety of people that we share common concerns across the region, and you never know how those conversations will lead to something productive in the future, is what I would say, I guess. Attended a meeting, the 18th meeting of the Metro T2020 Transportation for 2020 Study Committee that is looking at making recommendations to the Metro Council on corridor surface transportation improvements that might be included in a bond issue for this November to improve transportation issues. There's a lot of discussion about bicycle and pedestrian facilities, alternative modes, trails and bike routes. This particular discussion was about what are called the Tier 2 travel corridors, they're not the first ones up for funding, but they're ones that are being advanced as necessary, and hopefully we'll be able to receive some funding. In Clackamas County, the primary Tier 2 corridor is Highway 43 from the 205 northward through West Lynn to try to recreate that road as a more open and safe travel route that would include cycle track separated from the vehicle asphalt, you know, all along that area. That is an interesting area that's not perceived by many outsiders, it also has significant, populations of less advantaged people in parts of that area, and it also is kind of the only north-south connection without using 205 or I-5 for people that live in the Oregon City area and work further north, and so it has multiple functions, and it's not quite what some people perceive it to be as a West Lynn-centric piece of road, it has other functions also. So, all of that going on, upcoming, we have the Westside Economic Alliance meeting this month, which will be first responders, and some discussion from the judicial system representatives about how population growth is affecting their work. We have the Greater Portland Inc. Small Cities Consortium meeting coming up, which will talk about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, they call CEDS, for the Greater Portland area, which is the upcoming effort that they're kind of kicking off to actually have a thoughtful strategy about how they work on economic development throughout the area. And we have an upcoming Metropolitan Mayors Consortium meeting, where I understand we will have again some of the representatives from the Portland Business Alliance coming to talk about the proposed GPI merger, and how that would work, and what the advantages and problems might be. So, little bit going on here and there. Communications, we don't have any formal requests for communications, I've not received any speaker cards, are there any members of the public that want to speak at an unscheduled portion here? If you would please come forward, I would appreciate you passing your speaker slip to the city recorder, and come on up to the microphone.
Mayor, could you clarify that it's for non-scheduled or non-public hearing?
Yeah, this is for things that are not scheduled for a public hearing, or is it for something that is scheduled for a public hearing?
So you would need to wait until the public hearing starts?
Yeah, this is...
This is for things that are on the agenda?
This is on the water rate discussion, which is scheduled for a public hearing, so if it's all right, I'll hold this, and we'll call on that when we get to our new business item, sir. Thank you. Anybody else that has, for a non-scheduled item? I don't see any, okay. Counselor comments and liaison reports, if you would, please, Counsel President Akrevall.
Sure. I would say sure. I did appreciate the event earlier today, the GPI Annual Economic Summit, and, you know, there was a lot of discussion about collaboration, I think, as the mayor mentioned specifically with some of the higher education institutions, Clackamas Community College having campus within, Wilsonville certainly included in that group, and gave an inspiring presentation on the different ways that they have found collaboration to be beneficial for their own campus, for their students certainly, and to be able to use their resources better. So these broad relationships and work that is done within that group certainly is benefiting many, and it was good to see that. Looking forward, this next week, I'm going to meet with some members from the school board, just as the mayor and I attended a school board meeting recently this last month, I believe that kind of had some follow-up conversations, discussions out of the Diversity Equity Summit that they held the last fall in October. And so my meeting on Monday, a smaller group of us are just going to be reviewing some of the feedback that we received last month at that school board meeting, so I look forward to that discussion as well. And then, since we're meeting on a Thursday, we'll be back here with you all before we know it. It'll be soon, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Lehan.
Second. Thing is not on. As far as what I have been doing, it's mostly been related to Willamette Falls and Landings, and things have been moving along well in those endeavors. The City of West Lynn committed 1.2 million to restoration of the old city hall or old police station, that old building next to the old bridge, in case you're not familiar with that building, but it is a historic building, and they have committed the money to restore it for a regional heritage center. So as the, hopefully the locks proceed and are opened, and the National Heritage Area, if that's successful, it could be a central location. So that was a big commitment on the part of the City of West Lynn. I do think, just as a heads up, at some point we will be asked to, because it is now Willamette Falls and Landings, and goes on up the river, be asked to contribute to the efforts to get this National Heritage Area established. Most of the other cities are contributing something like 10,000 or 15,000 a year to the effort to get National Heritage status. If they do, then some money comes to the organization from the national organization, so it then becomes more self-sustaining. But anyway, it's something to consider in our budgeting process, is whether we want to participate, but Clackamas County and Oregon City, West Lynn, Lake Oswego, number of other places are contributing something in that realm, so just wanted to bring that up, maybe as we go into budget.
Do you have any numbers?
Numbers?
What our portion would be, do you have a number?
Well, I would, only that the kind of the standard for most cities is 10,000 or 15,000, but I don't know, I certainly have the financials I can give you.
That would be good.
I didn't bring them with me today, but I have the whole financial statements from the organization, you can see what everybody's doing.
That'd be good, thank you.
Counselor West.
Thank you. I think next week, or, yeah, next week, we have another Bond Measure Task Force meeting, so that will be exciting, is progressing well, and a lot of the people that are in this task force have a wealth of knowledge and expertise, which has been awesome to kind of gleam from and to get, so I am looking forward to that.
And the topic of the bond measure proposal is...
Oh, it's a Parks Bond, sorry, thank you. Yeah, our Parks Bond that the task force is putting together. One thing I do want to highlight, and this is what I think that we should, is that, I mean, most people know this, but it is Black History Month, and there's a couple great events going on in the metro area. One event that's really fun that you can take your kids to even in the afternoon is the Portland Jazz Festival, or if you want to go out on a date night and leave the kids at home with a sitter, you can go to an evening show, but this jazz festival was specifically set up to honor African-American musicians and their music, and so, and we've had, whether or not, I don't know if everybody knows this, in the Portland area, some pretty fantastic jazz musicians come out of this area. One that comes to mind that's no longer with us is Linda Hornbuckle, who is absolutely one of the most fantastic Portland music icons ever, and a joy, and one of Portland's treasures. Another great exhibit going on is if you've never been to the Oregon Historical Society, they now have a brand-new 7,000-square-foot exhibit that looks at Oregon's history within the African-American community, and it highlights Beatrice Kennedy, who was one of the founding members of the Portland NAACP. And so that's a great opportunity, too. And some of the conversations that you might want to have with your kids or family that we've been having at our house is making sure our children or family knows who great Americans like Frederick Douglass, and what happened during Selma, or even maybe watching a historical movie, but taking time to remember not only the diverse population that makes up our country, but also our history, and how Oregon intersects with that history, too. So that would be something I want to highlight, is this important month, and not to let it just pass by through our busy lives, but to take time to remember that, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Linville.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the mayor mentioned, I also attended the leadership meeting with Representative Kurt Schrader, and one of the things that I took away from that was that he was aware of the Willamette Falls and Landing Heritage legislation that's moving through Congress, and appeared to be supportive of that, so I was pleased that he knew that, among other things. And to kind of follow on the heels of that, the bill that is in the Oregon Legislature at this point for funding of the business plan for opening the Willamette Falls locks is moving forward, and it's optimistic that at least there'll be some funding available for that. I also wanted to just report on my attendance at the French Prairie Forum this past week. The focus of the meeting was on emergency response, and there were representatives from both Clackamas County and Marion County who attended that meeting and talked about where they were with planning and coordination, and they did talk about the city, and I know that our city has recently had the seniors' emergency response workshop, and it was made very clear, we had a representative there from Charbonneau, who is the coordinator for that community of, there are about 1,500 residences in that area, and because they are a significant residence south of the river, the emergency response, in all likelihood, would come from the south, which would be Marion County. So coordination between Clackamas County and Marion County is important for that area, as well as what would happen if we lost communication along the river and could not get up and down, so it was really good. And just in another note, there at the French Prairie Forum as well, there was a reminder about the community workshops that are coming up, and I gave flyers to each of the counselors and to the staff about the Willamette Valley Visitors Association is sponsoring Willamette River Recreation Community Workshops, and the river has been divided up into five segments, and we live in segment two. And so the workshops, the citizens, community members, and leaders, leadership, are invited to attend and guide development of recreational opportunities along the river, so that's the focus. And the workshop for our particular area is April 15th, which is a notable day, and it is being held in the Antonia Ballroom in Canby, which is at 221 North Grant Street in Canby. But registration is actually required for the community workshops, there's going to be a region-wide summit, May 19th, for which there is no charge, but there is a $5 cost to attend the community workshop, no cost for the summit, and there will be lunch and refreshments provided, and so if citizens are interested in registering and going and having some input about recreation on our portion of our segment of the river, you need to contact industry dot traveloregon dot com backslash willameteors, and it's W-I-L-L-A-M-E-T-T-E-O-R-S. There are scholarships available, so if people don't have money to go, there's some money. I attended last night with both Counselors Lane and Akrevall, the I-5 pedestrian bridge forum, and was very pleased about the turnout, it was really a wonderful turnout of citizens that came to that, and I think there was a great opportunity for people to, it was very obvious, they were putting dots on the questions, and there wasn't a lot of diversity in terms of, it was like our community kind of knew what things were priorities and what things were not, so I was really pleased and thank our staff for putting that forum on. And on Let's Talk Wilsonville, I think the survey will be out for another week or so, so if you didn't get a chance to participate in that last night, you can go online and still provide your input. What I will be doing, I'm going to attend the West Lynn State of the City presentation on the 25th, and then I will also be attending the Charbonneau Country Club Civic Affairs meeting, their focus for that meeting is going to be on the term limits and on the airport, and it is a civic affairs meeting presentation to the board for the country club, and I will just be there to provide information from the city's perspective. And then on the 29th, I will be attending the Rotary Heart of Gold Dinner, and look forward to doing that, and that is all I have.
Thank you very much. We do have tax help available at the library Saturdays, 10 to 2, this Saturday and the following Saturday at least, maybe another one after that. Those are no charge, is that correct, we know?
I believe they are free, yes.
Yeah, okay. And I should mention, I guess, that I'm scheduled to give an annual State of the City address here next council meeting, which is March 2, as part of our regular scheduled meeting, so I need to get ready for that, but you're welcome to come and listen if you would like. Okay. Why don't we move forward then with business, starting with the consent agenda?
Resolution number 2777, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with KNE Excavating Inc. for the French Prairie Road Phase 2 project.
Thank you. Consent agenda items are not up for discussion, unless someone feels the need, then they can be removed from consent. Is there an action requested by council on the consent agenda item?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the one item read, Resolution 2777. All in favor, please say aye.
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 This is 5-0, thank you. Bringing us to new business, which we have non-scheduled for, neither do we have continuing business scheduled outside of the public hearings, so the next item up on our published agenda is our two different public hearings. If I could ask...
Unrelated.
Yeah, unrelated, so we need to do them separately, so if we could ask for Resolution 2788, please.
Resolution number 2788, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville establishing and imposing just-in-equitable user fees for the city water system, amending Resolution Numbers 1624 and 2447, and repealing Resolution Numbers 1713, 1829, 1957, and 2204.
Okay, so the statutes require us to do a formal presentation here, so I will call to order Wilsonville City Council Public Hearing on Resolution 2788, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, council will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format, it will be conducted like this, first city staff will present their report, then we will ask for testimony by those who... Then we will ask for testimony by those who favor, oppose, or are neither with regard to the proposed resolution. If you wish to testify, please do complete a speaker card and pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, please come to the microphone and indicate your name and address and make your statement. I do request those providing testimony, not repeat testimony already given. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. So our staff report first, Ms. Rodocker.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Rodocker. I'm the city finance director, and I have with me tonight my trustee sidekick, Doug Gabbert. He is from FCS, who has helped us along in this process. So we actually began discussing this with council back in July of 2019. We have had four different work sessions where we discussed different rate options and the impacts that each of those options would have on our customers. The big driving force on the rate being looked at now is that our last increase was in January of 2017. And we've also just recently completed the water treatment master plan, water treatment plant master plan. And what we have learned is that when a master plan is completed, we have new data, better information, and we usually try to get a rate study done to get those included. So a cost of service analysis was prepared by FCS. This is based on historical customer data, as well as actual expenditures and revenues and forecasting, and using all of this information to come up with the different rate scenarios that were presented. We're also looking to adopt a new residential fee structure. We are planning to start the implementation of our new MUNA software system for the utility billing in January of next year. And they had already told us that they were not able to handle the structure that we So what we had prior, we actually had two separate rates. During the wintertime, a customer is charged by their actual usage. In the summer rates, we had tiered rate, where it was a winter average plus three units. So every customer had a little different rate structure because of the variance in the winter average. And we had a tier two as well. What we're recommending is going with just a straight tier, two-tier rate structure. This is very similar to a lot of other cities and water districts here in the area. One thing that we're a little bit unique on is that we actually include the first two units in the base fee. Most of the base fees do not include any of the usage. We set tier one at usage between three to eight units. The eight units came from our system-wide winter averages five. Our old rate was winter average plus three. So we figured that the eight range would, you know, cover a lot of our customers, as that's their winter average. So the rate implementation structure that was included in your packet includes the first column here is our existing rates. Then we have the proposed for May 1st of 2020 and going through fiscal year '23. The rate study, the cost of service analysis, actually had a five-year rate path. But in the past, we have gone with a four-year, so I figured we could do that once again. And I would recommend at year four that we kind of do a review to see where we're at before moving on with any other increases. As you'll note, the fixed charges are being reduced across the board. They are being increased at a rate of 3% from year to year. The volume charge is based on the cost of service analysis of the characteristics of the different customer types. So you'll see that those are different for each customer. This is the actual table and the resolution. I wanted to bring it to your attention because there are a couple of things that weren't included in the cost of service analysis, and that is our bulk water cells. Those are a two-inch meter. These are rented by construction sites, builders and developers. They are able to hook into the fire hydrants to use to keep the roads damp and things of that sort. They are two-inch meters, so we're recommending that the... Sorry, my mouse is working on my screen, but obviously not on the screen up above. So we just replicated the two-inch meter base fees. And for the volume charges, we calculated the increase each year for the two-inch meter and just replicated that throughout. And we also have fire charges. We increased those 1.5% as they are pretty stable overall. So we've had several different forms of communication. We posted the public hearing notice twice in the Wilsonville spokesman. We also put a message on the last two monthly utility bills. We have had a couple of different phone calls from primarily residential customers that our front desk staff was able to handle. We also notified the top 50 water users. And when we were going through this process, we realized that many of the larger companies actually send all of their bills to either an outside utility firm or to an accounts payable department. So we went through and manually pulled out anybody else's name and address that we had. We ended up sending about 100 letters out, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, the word did get out. I did hear back from Sawyer Coca-Cola, and of course, they're our number-one customer, so they were a little bit concerned. We had calculated out, based on their actual usage for last year, for 2019, and it turned out to be about a 6% increase. Once they realized that we hadn't, you know, done the cost of living increases, they, you know, were okay with the amount of the increase. But they do their budgeting in July for the next calendar year. So they asked how could they get, you know, informed of different rate studies going on, you know, while they're in their budgeting process. Right now, we don't really have a system for that, so I just told them to call me for the next two cycles anyway, hoping to retire at the end of next year. But I will pass that on before somebody else take care of it. And then this week, we had a request from Arbor Villabon Homeowners Association. It wasn't really directed at the rate study itself, but it's a questioning part of the actual language of the resolution. And it's something that we aren't addressing. So I did recommend that they did come here this evening. Just to give you a little bit of a background, they have 16 irrigation meters, which, like most of our irrigation meter users, are shut off a good portion of the year. And they were asking to have their base fees not charged during the time that the water meter is off. And I don't know if... I think Mayor Nap was the only one. Back in 2013, we had a big discussion about this. Not only did we have a number of irrigation meter accounts, but we also had snowbirds, who we were turning off their water when they weren't using it, and we weren't charging any base fees. And the discussion basically came down to, you know, when a meter is installed in a property, they become a part of the entire system. And as such, their base fees include, you know, charges for...
Capacity treatment.
Yes. Yeah, it's not just, you know, reading the meter and putting out the bill, but there's also some of the maintenance is included as well. And then directly in the resolution, Part 1, Article 1.2, Section 10, specifically states that all customers are responsible for monthly base charges. And as such, the finance department does not have the authority to waive base fees for one customer or another. And last was a bunch of housekeeping, of updating the resolution. I have to thank Amanda, our Assistant City Attorney, as she somehow or another managed to go through all of this. We had several changes. We went, obviously, updating the new rates. We had a couple of tables that had specific dollars amounts for, you know, buying a wrench or a hydrant or hydrant wrench. And it turned out that we were actually paying more for the meters, for the equipment that we were selling. So we've asked to have that removed, and that will include that in the application process, so that it can be updated when the price changes. We are referring more to the city code throughout the resolution. Our bulk water process is something that is done outside of our utility billing process, so we're kind of, you know, firming up how we get that done. And lastly, we were overcharging or wanting to overcharge 15% interest on delinquent accounts, but we were notified that the ORS had changed that, so it's down to 9% now. And that is basically the information that we have. I'm ready to answer any questions, any discussion.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff here on our water study? Counselor West.
On delinquent fees, is 9% regionally kind of standard or...
That's the state standard.
So is there a way... Let me ask that differently. Is there a way, as a city, if there is extenuating circumstance for a resident, to waive those fees? How much control do we have? Or is it totally controlled by statute?
Interest rate is.
The interest rate, yeah. It is controlled by the resolution and the statute, but we do work with our customers.
For hardship situation, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, and we do have a program of assistance that's available in the community for some that have great need to...
We partner with Wilsonville Community Sharing.
Community Sharing, right, right, that we put some funds into.
We get a lot of requests throughout the year for adjustments and credits for leasings and other stuff.
Yes.
It's kind of an ongoing conversation.
Okay. One of the questions I had in my mind was about our high-volume users, so I'm glad you commented about that. It's always difficult, I think, for a business that, even if it hasn't been raised in a few years, they budget based on what they know their cost to be. And then if all of a sudden, that's not their cost, then they're behind the eight ball. I mean, you know how it works with budget. So somehow, maintaining contact with those kinds of customers is probably something we should do the best we can do.
We do get a lot of phone calls throughout the year, and my staff knows, you know, oh, we have this rate study coming up, or, you know, this has already been approved. We do put our rate increases on the back of the bill, so that as soon as they are approved, it shows the whole rate path. So that helps a lot. But this one was one of those kind of weird and limbo things, because we hadn't, you know, changed anything for a couple of years, so...
Counselor Lindvall.
I just wanted to ask you to just clarify for the hearing portion of this, when this would become effective.
It would be May 1st of this year. Of this year. And then three years, each May 1st, for the next three years after that.
Okay. All right. I have one speaker card, and if there's others in the room that would like to speak on this topic, please pass forward a card so that we can have you up here. Tom Vaughn, please.
And you want my name and address?
Oh, we'd like to, yeah.
My name is Tom Vaughn. My address is 29243 Southwest Villabon Drive South in Wilsonville, in Villabon. And I am president of the Arbor HOA, and that's why I'm here tonight. And I wanted to first say thanks, Kathy. I contacted her yesterday. She was very kind, got back to me this morning, answering my question the best that she could coming into this meeting. And again, let me know that I could come tonight and share some of my concerns. When you look up there, I was kind of shocked when Arbor HOA is up on the list as one of the top two customers. Last year, we spent $115,000 on water to the city of Wilsonville. That increase that you're talking about on May 1st is going to take us up over $120,000. We didn't plan for that, but we'll figure out how we're going to pay it. But that's not my concern. My concern is the way that we're being billed. And I don't know if you have the opportunity to change that or not at this point, but when you charge a base fee, I can understand a base fee to homeowners, single-family homes, townhomes, whatever. We're talking a $328 charge a month for the last seven years for an irrigation system that runs five months out of the year. So seven months out of the year, we're paying $328 for a system that is completely shut down. That's over $2,000. So when you're talking an HOA and you're talking dollars, every dollar matters. So my question is Arbor was put in place in around 2007. So they put this irrigation system in, and we're probably one of the unique HOAs, because we pay for the water, the homeowners do not. It goes for seven years, 2013, I believe, is what Kathy said. This change took place to this base charge for all the meters. But we have 16 meters that run our sprinkler system. Arbor HOA is 353 homes, covering a lot of acreage. So it takes a lot of water to manage our community and keep it top-notch. So my concern and why I'm here is I'm asking that the council look at this base rate and maybe make an exception for Arbor HOA. As big as we are, as much money as we give the city of Wilsonville every year, it's an irrigation system. It's not single-family homes, it's not townhomes. It's an irrigation system that's just dormant seven months out of the year. I just don't think... It's hard for me, and honestly, to justify that cost, in my mind. And I think we're unique. I don't know anybody, any other customers you have that have this kind of issue.
Can I...
That's my presentation.
How many homes are in your HOA?
353.
353. Counselor Lehman.
Is it prorated over the year? I mean, are you being charged? Is that that $325 a month, is that what you're actually using over the course of a year?
No, the $360 a month is the charge to read the 16 irrigation meters or are charged for those 16 irrigation meters that we have that are sitting dormant.
So even though... So then when they are being used, you don't get charged any... You get charged then for the volume?
Yes. We get charged for...
The actual water.
Actual and the water, yeah.
There's a base fee for every meter. That is paid year-round.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
I don't...
You pay usage on top of the base fee.
Usage is fine. Why would you charge a base fee for an irrigation system? I can understand it for homes.
I was just clarifying what you was asking.
Yeah. So, okay. Other questions? Any questions we need to answer?
Does that... Does that... Is that how it works for the other HOAs?
Anyone that has a meter pays a base fee. Per meter, base fee.
Right, right, but...
They're not unique in that.
Well, we are unique from the standpoint that most of the HOAs that are in now, the homeowners still pay for their irrigation. We're one of the only ones that the HOA pays strictly for the water.
Well...
And I don't know why that is, but that's just the way it was set. And I don't know why that is, but that's just the way it was set up.
Your HOA set that up that way, right?
Yeah, back in 2006.
So you could change it. Your HOA could change that, right?
No.
With a vote, you couldn't?
Well, you got 16 meters that the HOA controls. They're not on the homeowner's sites.
Oh, I see.
We, we still pay, we still pay for our water, too. I pay $100 a month for water.
For your home?
For my home, yes. Where all the other HOAs, they, they use their sprinkler systems, it's all charged in their homeowner's water bill. This is a separate charge for us.
Question, Councilor West?
Full disclosure, I belong to this HOA. Tom is my HOA president. So.
So should you recuse yourself from this discussion?
I'm thinking about it.
Financially impacted, you asked, too, right?
And that was my question is I wanted to disclose that and then.
So if there's a financial impact.
To me personally, then I need to, then I'll have to recuse myself from the discussion.
You could speak if you wanted to speak.
Can I ask questions still, or?
Well, I think you could.
You could testify if you wanted to testify.
You could step down, fill out a speaker card and speak.
Okay, I'm good. Yeah, I'm just going to recuse myself. Do I need to step off the dais?
No.
Okay.
All right. Any further testimony then? We'll get to discussion here in a moment.
It might be worth asking Kathy just how unique this situation is.
Well, after we go back to.
Yeah, yes, yes, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for letting me come before you.
And I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else? So seeing none, we will ask staff to come back and give us any further information you feel we should have.
Pardon me?
Per meter fee.
Yes, it is a per meter fee. We do have over 425 irrigation meters as of the last time I looked. There are other HOAs, but unfortunately, I don't know how that, who's paying for what. I assume that, you know, if you're an HOA member, you're paying for that water one way or another.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I, and I just, I can't talk to that. But I do know that we do have a large number of irrigation meters.
So in a normal circumstance, if I might, homeowner would irrigate out of their regular water meter and not have it separately metered. So they're paying for a meter all year round and sometimes of the year, they're doing more irrigation and some not.
They have an irrigation meter, it'd be a larger meter, right? So their base rate would be a little higher?
For, I don't think we have too many residential that have their own irrigation.
So you said you have 415 irrigation.
We have 425 irrigation meters, but I don't, you know, that's for.
So those are, those are non-residential for the most part.
Most part.
But in every case where there's a non-residential irrigation meter, those companies are paying a base.
Yes.
Rate also.
The way that, yeah, I can't, I wish I had a list of all of our different customers, but I don't know exactly. But there are 425, they are all charged a base fee. The reason, the benefit for having an irrigation meter is that then it's not running through their regular water meter. And when it goes through their regular water meter, they, it also gets charged the sewer fee. So the benefit to the company of installing a, a separate water meter is that they're not incurring the charges.
Proportion of that that goes to sewer, yeah. So the testimony that we had, HOA's got 353 homes and when the system is turned off, they're paying $328 a month. Now, the base rate is being reduced slightly under this program, so it'll go down presumably a little bit. I don't know what size the meters are. But if you look at it on a pro-rata basis, that means that each home that's benefiting from that sprinkler is paying 93 cents a month in the off months.
Correct.
The 353 homes are each paying 93 cents a month for their ability to be serviced by a irrigation meter during the irrigation season. Does that sound right?
Sounds about right. I don't have my calculator.
We're confident that those other irrigation meters, people are paying for those whether they're running irrigation water or not.
Correct. It's not an unusual request. It just happened to coincide with this rate hearing, so I thought it was a good time to, you know, have them come forward and talk about it. I would assume that other people who have irrigation meters would also like to have that same, you know, way.
Seems to me we would have to be consistent in our policy, you know, and either not charge anybody unless they were irrigating, which starts to get to be a whole lot of bookkeeping. And the, what I thought I heard staff say earlier was that, you know, we amortize some of the cost of building the system, having the pipe in the street, laying the pipe up to the property, all of which has an, an initial cost and an ongoing.
Correct.
Maintenance and.
Right, we size, basically our plant is sized for the hottest day in August.
Right.
So if you have a meter, you help pay for that sizing, you help pay for the conveyance, the treatment and fire flow. That's another important factor that we have to plan for and deal with as well. I don't know if there's any other factors that go into that base rate, but I think those are the most probably important ones.
Actually, the biggest, the biggest single, if you, if you take everything that's in the base charge, and I'm talking about system-wide, I'm not talking about any individual customer, but, but there.
Forgot debt service, sorry.
No, but, but that's, but don't include that. Because that wouldn't, that wouldn't be correct in this case. The three biggest buckets, the three buckets are, number one, your first two CCF of water.
So. CCF's being 100 cubic feet of usage?
Yes, sir.
Unit.
Thank you, thank you. The cost of that is the single biggest chunk of the base charge because the first two CCF are included in the base. And so that's the biggest, that's the biggest one. The second biggest bucket is the customer-related charge. These are for, these are for costs related to serving customers, you know, customer service, billing, that kind of stuff. There's also, there's a very small portion, it's about, it's about 3% of your total revenue that's, that's classified in the report as meters and services. And this is, this is maintaining and servicing the meters and on maintenance that's required for that. It's a very, it's a very small portion. Actually, the biggest part is the first two CCF of water.
Which they're not using.
Which they're not using.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot, awful lot of infrastructure for something that's shut down seven months of the year.
Okay, Councilor Linville, you had a question?
Yes, I did. I, I'm still unclear about what the difference is in this, in the new rate structure versus the old rate structure in terms of the irrigation meters. So, and I, I thought in the old system, there, there was a base as well. And so if we could take the Arbor HOA as an example, assuming that that's a one-inch meter, the current rate is 22.58 a month. This is where it times the 16. And the new rate that will go into effect, May 1st, would be 19.18. So there is a slight reduction.
In the base.
In the base rate. In the base. Yeah, and even though it does increase 3% over the next four years, at the end of the last rate increase, it would be $20.96. So it still would be less than the base fee is today. So I'm still having difficulty getting to where the increase is.
The increase is in the usage.
Volume charge.
Volume charge.
Volume, not, not in the base. There's a reduction in base and an increase in volume. So when they're actually using the water, they will pay more for, for the water that's flowing through the meters.
Oh, I see, okay.
This was consistent with the council goal of providing greater incentive for conservation.
Right.
So in the seven months that the HOA is testifying they're not using the meters, not using flow, they're actually going to be paying slightly less under this proposal. They still.
But they were still paying.
Yeah.
They were paying all along for months where.
Yeah, and they still, they still would. It just would be a slightly less base fee. And the argument is that everybody is sharing in the cost of building and operating the overall system, whether they're drawing usage or not. When I look at it on a pro-rata basis, doesn't seem to me like less than a dollar per house per month is an extraordinary charge to participate in the irrigation system even in off months to me, but that's just my viewpoint, yeah. Other questions? Considerations? We've spent a lot of time on these trying to find the right balance and it's pretty clear to me that it's like a balloon. When you squeeze it in one place, it's going to bulge out somewhere else and, you know, we've got to make the whole system work. And there's probably not any perfect way to balance those different components. If there's no other public testimony to be offered, I don't see anybody waving at me here, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the council what your pleasure is with regard to resolution number 2788.
I move to approve resolution 2788.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay. Mr. West, you're maintaining a recusal through the vote?
I've got it okay from the city attorney that I can vote on this, actually. Yeah, I will be voting.
So you will be participating?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to second. Any final questions or input that council would like to have? Councilor Acreball?
I, I understand, you know, in, sometimes we have a thankless job. And I understand that HOAs sometimes have a thankless job, too, trying to, to budget and be good stewards of their community's HOA fees as well. So I guess I want to say that, that I hear the, the wish that we could go a little bit, stretch these dollars a little bit further and do a little bit more for, for, you know, the neighborhood. I do see a lot of benefit to this new structure and this new plan. You know, if we kind of zoom out and look at where we were, I think the previous rate structure was very confusing. It was very complicated. We have greater ability with the new software system with this. I think there is more equity with the system. I, I, just explaining it to people, as I would imagine over the phone of why, you know, why do I have this one rate and somebody down the street has a different rate? Or I just moved into the house, can you explain to me why my rate is based on, you know? I think that there is a lot to be gained in this new structure. I think that it's trying to get at some of the conservation goals that as a community I think is important, that we are careful on our usage of water. We're starting to understand more and more and more how valuable water is. And, you know, of all the services that we provide, the, the residents in our city, dependable, clean water is huge. And so, you know, I think that that is a very important goal that we need to take seriously and we need to make sure that we have the resources to be meeting that goal, that we're providing clean, dependable water for our residents. And so I'm glad that we're, you know, there hasn't been a lot of changes for the rate structures for a while. And so we're, we're looking at that and addressing that and making sure that, that we're going to be able to have a sure footing and have, have these gradual adjustments going into the future so we don't have any jumps. So I am seeing a lot of positive in this plan, too. And nobody likes to increase bills and it's a hard job. But I do see a lot of benefit with what we have as a council, too. Spent four meetings discussing and kind of wrestling with and trying to come up with a good plan. And I, I do see a lot of good in what is put before us this evening.
Thank you. Councilor Linville?
Well, I, I also want to, I mean, I live in an HOA and I understand when things, all of a sudden, your bills change and you weren't certainly planning for that and, and how difficult that is. I also understand the perceived logic of not being charged for something you're not using. I get that, too. I understand that, too. I wish my bill was like that, too. And I know that a lot of my neighbors who go south would love to have their bills stopped during times when they weren't using their water either. I think one of the things that I have to take into consideration, too, is that the homeowners in the HOA are going to have their bills reduced. They're going to probably be paying less money for their base than they have been paying. And while I know it is difficult for HOAs to go back and increase homeowners' fees as a result of increasing budgets, that is a, probably a logical thing that, that is out there as well, that those individual homeowners will be paying less. For the most part, that's, that appears to be the case. And I think that was what our hope was, is that the majority of homeowners would end up with a, with an equitable, a more, this was a more equitable process, particularly for the larger users to be bearing the, an equitable portion of, of the cost of the water. But I, I appreciate being in the spot where you've gotten now a bill that you weren't planning to pay. And so I'm, I'm pleased that you came to bring that to our attention and I think we needed to hear that. So thank you.
Councilor West?
Thank you. I'm going to vote today because on some level, all of us in the entire city is impacted by this. And it is sobering when you're making a decision that impacts all your neighbors, because we're so small enough that I still think we're all neighbors. And as city councilors, we represent the entire city at large. I don't just represent Villaboa. I don't just represent my block, just like any of the other councillors say about their communities as we live across the city. And we have to look at not only every neighbor and HOA and business, but we have to look at every population and demographic within the city and how it impacts them. And a lot of discussion happened around equity. And a lot of the concern first was from the councillors, including myself, was how does this impact the least of us and the least of these, the ones that are struggling the most? Can we not, we want to make sure they're not forgotten and they're not impacted negatively. And another question that we all were in unison on was, are we being good stewards of the beautiful resource that we have just as perfectly as Councilor Acreball spoke to? And I think that this strikes a balance and we all can probably find things that we cringe a little bit on and then feel like we're hitting the mark there. And that probably means it's pretty good policy, right? Like it's, and that debate has happened and discussion's happened. I also am impressed with taking all of those subjective factors in that sometimes are, but about how this plans for the future and being not only good stewards of the environment, but of future city resources and managing those resources and the capital needs coming forward that will be looming and making sure that we don't have an unfortunate surprise. And I don't know if every city in the metro area can say that they've had that or have done that, been that judicious. I think that we have in this. And I hear the concerns. And I hear the concerns, and maybe there was a couple hiccups along the way, but I do think the city staff did a fantastic job and made every good effort to make sure it was transparent in the process. And that helps me even as a councillor know that I can trust the work that was done, because it seemed to be robust and transparent. So I guess all my comments with that.
Thank you. Councilor Leehan?
Yes, I just wanted to add that I was unaware that there, that this was different, this much different for Arbor than most of the other Villebois neighborhoods, or for that matter, other neighborhoods around the city. So it would seem like, going forward, we need to examine this situation, whether they are billed on these, I mean, the pros and cons of either method, that they go to individual homeowners, the meter costs, or they go into these group HOA meters, because we've got neighborhoods, you know, we're kind of running out of new neighborhoods in Villebois, but Frog Pond is going to be having these similar issues. And I don't know if, who makes that decision? The developer? The HOA? Must be the developer, because those are in before the people come in, so...
Developers set up the HOAs.
Right, I understand that. But as far as how to divvy out the meters, how many meters to have in order to irrigate the various common areas?
Got it.
Or in Villebois, it's, they're irrigating everybody's yards. So, you know, I mean, it's a consideration, I think, that, or a conversation we should have, planning should have, with developers as to what the implications of Plan A versus Plan B. I mean, there are pros and cons to either way, as I see it, but I didn't realize we had this much difference neighborhood to neighborhood, if that's the only one or one of only a few that are metered that way. Is that, is, maybe this is better in the long run for the most people, or maybe it's not? I don't know. That's an evaluation.
Yeah.
That's all.
I don't know how unique it is. We can certainly see if we could find information on how other HOAs are set up and report back to you. I think the other thing, the HOA...
But we should know that. We, I mean, the meter, we know...
From the billing stuff.
From the billing stuff and engineering probably knows as well.
Yeah, so we can, we can track that down. The other thing that the HOA could do is see if they need all those meters.
Right.
They could do an analysis or hire someone to do an analysis and see if they need all 16. I don't know if they do or not.
Right, and, because certainly I'm aware that most of Villebois irrigates way more than the Park at Maryfield or other neighborhoods. And whether that's because when it's going, running through an individual meter, people are...
Conserving.
Less, they're watching it tighter, but I don't know. Or whether the HOA wants to control the amount of irrigation, because they want to make sure that everybody's yard is green, which in the Park at Maryfield, it's not. Lots of people don't water. So, so those are all judgment calls that a neighborhood is making and individual homeowners are making, but everybody should be aware of the difference going in.
Okay, I would like to make a couple of comments. I am persuaded by my understanding that if each house had its own meter and their irrigation ran through that meter, they would be charged for the irrigation water, and they would be charged for a sewer service proportion that is not actually going into the sewer, it's going onto the grass. And therefore, I cannot but believe that each individual homeowner's cost would be significantly more if they were watering all those lawns out of their domestic meter.
They're already paying for the sewer and the meter, right? In the meter that they have?
Well, this for...
Well, I'm saying if you were running your irrigation water through your house meter, you would be running a significantly larger volume, and a proportion of that larger volume is charged to sewer fees.
Through our winter averaging. So your sewer bill's based on how much water you use during a specific time of the year? That's what the mayor's saying, I believe. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's not when the irrigation runs.
Right.
Well, it's not when the irrigation runs.
The sewer, sewer, those sewer charges are calculated on the non-irrigation months.
Correct. It would be, it is different for residential customers. It's a commercial customers that get, that are taking advantage of not having to pay the sewer fees. The sewer fee is based on the winter average, sorry, I have a cold, so I have a cough drop in my mouth. Excuse me. So the sewer fee is based on the winter average, and then it is, that is your rate for an entire year until the next winter average.
So it's all included already?
Right.
Unless you use more volume, right?
That was my question, is would there be a larger meter required for a residence? Normally, it's a three-quarter. Wouldn't you need a one-inch meter to do irrigation?
No, I do irrigation. I don't have...
Depends on how many square feet you're irrigating, how big your yard is, how much water you're putting on it.
I'm not a meter expert.
The original residential rate was the winter average plus three units. That was your tier one.
Yeah.
And then when you used over that, you went to your tier two.
Yeah.
But that was in the, the sewer rate is just a flat rate.
Not on the volume?
No.
Okay, well, then I'm mistaken on that.
Well, volume during the winter average months.
Yeah, and typically during the winter average, you're not using your...
Yeah, that's right.
You are both, you are both right. Councilor Leanne and you are both right, just on different questions.
Illustrating how complex this balance is, I guess.
It is, that's right.
All right. Any other discussion council would like to have? If not, I'm going to call for a vote on Resolution Number 2788. Is there a motion, please?
There is a motion. Yes.
We already did that.
We already have a motion and a second.
Oh, we did, we did. All right, and we're discussing. So then we're ready to vote.
Yeah.
You are.
That'd be it.
All in favor, then, of the motion to approve Resolution 2788? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Thank you for the discussion, also, on this continuing to be complex questions. Bringing us to Resolution 2789.
Resolution Number 2789, a resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Hello, I'm Keith Katko, the city's Assistant Finance Director. This is a budget supplementary request for council's consideration.
Before you go too far, I'm going to open a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
I will call to order a Wilsonville City Council public hearing on Resolution 2789 at 8:31. Ladies and gentlemen, council will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format. First, city staff will present their report, then we will ask for testimony by proponents, opponents, and those who neither favor nor oppose the proposed resolution. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room and pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your statement. I request those providing testimony not repeat testimony already given, simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is sufficient. Mr. Katko?
So we have nine items for your consideration tonight. As allowed by Oregon State statute, the city council is able to amend the adopted budget with either a supplemental transfer, which relocates the budget between line items in a fund's budget, or by a budget adjustment when the transfers exceed certain percentages set for expenditures and contingency. A budget amendment such as we have this evening requires a public hearing prior to approval. Notice for the hearing was published in the spokesman on February 12th. Like I mentioned, we have nine items tonight. For materials and services, we have a $5,000 budget request for the new sidewalk repair reimbursement program, a $100,000 budget request related to the street sweeping contract approved this past December under Resolution 2781. Additionally, we have 154,000 requests for bank fees driven by an increase in customer credit card usage, as well as an increase in gross sales overall. Those are the materials and services-related budget requests. We also have a capital outlay supplemental request, which is for the replacement of the community center kitchen steamer for $20,000. Additionally, we have capital, we have a few capital project supplemental requests, including CIP 4214, day road emergency repairs of $85,000, CIP 414, road maintenance projects for $73,000, and CIP 1123 for a water SDC rate study for $8,800. In, it's a net zero transfer. We also have a reclass of $5,000 from CIP 8128 phone replacement to CIP 8122 for a copier replacement. And lastly, we have a request to adjust the budgeted beginning fund balances of three separate funds to adjust it to the end of prior year actual results. So those are the budget supplemental requests.
Counsel, any questions for staff on the proposed supplemental budget adjustment? Is that the right term? Councilor West?
Can you recap a little bit the sidewalk repair program and how, I don't know, this is just the budget, right, but is that, that's where we would match funds or we would help somebody if they were in need, right, to repair the, right?
I think, I'm trying to remember what month we brought that to council.
It was, I remember the pictures of the sidewalks and the roots.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get like a little grasp of that.
But it's a grant program, first come, first served. We don't...
Fifty percent.
Fifty, I'm not...
Okay, fifty percent. And anybody can, it's not income-based or needs-based, anybody can apply for it, right?
It's first come, first served.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Leehan?
Tell me a little bit more about this commercial steamer.
Right. That is for the food service they prepare for the seniors in the community center. Apparently, it's outlived its useful life, or there was some mechanical problem that necessitated it replacing it more cost-efficient than repairing it. So it's a $20,000 request for the steamer. I believe it's to steam food.
I just Googled commercial steamers, kitchen steamers, and they're mostly in the $1,000 to $5,000 range, so I'm wondering, this must be quite the steamer.
Right. I guess I don't know. I received the request from the senior center.
Does it involve something more like they have to do a new HVAC or new hood replacement? Or is there more than just the steamer?
Terrelizer, maybe? It's like a...
I'd have to get back to you on that. I'm pretty, I'm sure they, they're not going to overbuy.
Food steamer, but 20,000.
It was the request that was given to me by the community center at the time.
I'm sure they got a bid. I'm sure it's more complex than just a simple steamer.
Right.
But I don't have to be...
No, I'm sure, but, but I mean, I mean, what I'm looking at are commercial food steamers, so, so I...
You may be right. It might have something to do with repiping the HVAC or something.
Having to redo the vent in the hood.
If you're interested, I can get you the specifics and email it tomorrow.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there must be a reason. I'm just, I never...
So maybe we could ask staff to...
Tour the steamer?
Double-check it before they spend the money.
Maybe we'd, maybe we'd like to go over and dedicate this steamer when it comes in.
We'll have a steamer ribbon cutting.
A ribbon cutting.
Any other questions? Councilor West?
Okay, this, I mean, if it sounds dumb, I'm sorry, but it's a question I have. So, back to sidewalk repair. So these numbers are the total for the entire project, right? For the entire, so $5,000 to cover sidewalk repairs entire?
Starting with $5,000 to see what kind of interest we get.
How many sidewalks could $5,000, half of it, fifty percent repair?
How many cracks?
Yeah, how many feet are you replacing?
I guess I'm asking, I'll just...
I guess would be like $500 to $700 for a normal.
And Maury's Landing spoke to an elderly man who, that famous picture that said caution with the roots coming through and spray painted white, was approached by the city that he had to repair that fixed income. And, I mean, I was, I felt ashamed a little bit to be, to this guy, to be like, you have to fix this part of your sidewalk a little bit. Like, that's just how I felt. It didn't feel right. And so when I see, like, I would go to him and I would even knock on his door and be like, you have money available, maybe we can help raise you the other half, but I look here and I see $5,000, and I'm like, there's no way that that even covers half of that sidewalk repair. I mean, it's just like these, it's like buckled, and it, it just seems like a pretty repair, but you have to get engineering and all the, and construction and all that. So I'm wondering, are we allowed to talk about increasing programs, or do we need to see how this goes for a little bit, like?
I think this is how it goes. I don't, I mean, even the project, if you just go out there, it's something like it's going to be, if there's some stump grinding and stuff, maybe, I don't know.
I am a nurse, so I don't know anything about the cost for these things or steamers or...
Repair like one or two panels, you're looking at $500 to $750.
Right.
As long as we're not doing the work. If they're doing the work, if it's a public, you know, prevailing wage job, then that's, you know, all bets are off.
Okay.
This is designed for the homeowner to go get free bids.
Okay.
Submit those to the city, and then, you know, we reimburse up if the work is done.
Okay, thank you.
But you should certainly knock on the owner's door and tell him that the program...
I do, I have it, I have a picture, I have it. I mean, I know right where he lives and...
And the contact is Holt Casell, if you want to give him Holt's name.
Okay.
Just have him contact, and we'll have the grant stuff sent to him.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Linville?
I just have a question about the last item that is on the staff report, that is the beginning fund balance to actual prior year ending fund balance restatement adjustment.
Right.
Tell me why, I mean, I understand what prior year ending balance.
Yeah.
I mean, so we're, we're a little over, we're almost three-quarters of the way through the year. Is that, is that correct, the fiscal year? And so the, the original, well, I'll let you explain it.
Well, we, the budget for the beginning fund balance is an estimate. We're going to come to you shortly with the city budget for next year. We haven't really finished the current year, so we're going to estimate a beginning fund balance and pin that budget to that. In the prior year, it turned out that, especially in the road maintenance fund, a lot of the projects didn't get done as anticipated, so the ending fund balance was a lot more than we projected, so we're just kind of technically correcting that budgeted beginning fund balance to match it to the actual ending fund balance. Does that, does that make a little sense? Basically, we're, we're...
Threwing up a guess.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be guessing the ending fund balance this year, we already have, so we can start budgeting for next year.
I guess I'm just asking a little bit about what your accounting practice is. The accounting practice is to base the current year's beginning balance on, on what number? I mean, how do you do that? Just so I know.
By restating the ending fund balance, we, the offset to that is the increase to the contingency fund, and when a lot of these projects aren't completed, they're rolled over to the next year. And if we don't increase that contingency funds, we won't have enough money to complete the projects that were supposed to be completed the year before. So it is one of those weird technical organ budget law things, but it's really so that we can increase the contingency, so that we then have the funds available for them to complete the project.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, they have a formal public hearing. I've not received any speaker cards. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak to Resolution 2789 on the supplemental Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask council, what's your pleasure with regard to Resolution 2789?
Your honor, I would like to move to approve Resolution Number 2789. Resolution Number 2789.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in second, we approve Resolution 2789. Council questions or discussion?
Get a picture of the steamer.
Hearing none, I will ask for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2789? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Bringing us to city manager business.
Just a few quick updates, your honor. We told you upstairs, but I'll say it for anybody that may be watching, that we did learn last night that ODOT signed a contract for the Boombridge retrofit study. So, we're encouraged that all the effort from city council and from our legislative, our lobbying efforts at the state Capitol are pains and dividends. Working with the school district to see if they want to co-sponsor with us to be a host city for the World Outdoor Track and Field Event that's going to be in Eugene. They would have to agree to allow athletes to use their facilities, but it would be great exposure for Wilsonville. So, we're going to see if we can make some traction on that. Been talking to Bill Evans and our communications department and folks in CD about the need to do some more ongoing kind of communication on the major projects that we have going on and also on I-5, because there's a lot of, I think, misinformation in the community about what's our responsibility and what isn't and what the impacts are on I-5 and what we can and can't do about them. And then just, you know, stuff like the Beckman-Dip Bridge and the I-5 pit, you know, pit bridge and the French Prairie Bridge. I think we need to do a better job. We're going to figure out how we can communicate more effectively and more regularly on those projects because we need to do a better job on that. And then I also attended the I-5 Bike Pad Forum last night. It was very well attended. I was there for, I think, the first hour and lots of great questions. And I thought the staff did a great job of setting that up and encouraging public comment. So, I'll be interested to see, you know, with those comments and also the survey on Let's Talk Wilsonville, to see kind of how that is in terms of public sentiment. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any legal business?
No legal business.
No legal. Well, that's everything we've got scheduled. Anything else council would like to?
Chatter about?
Chatter about? Say, ask? I'm not seeing anything urgent. I am going to call us adjourned at 8:45. Thank you very much.